Of people becoming homeowners, then how are we, how are we going to address the housing problems? When can we do that? Doctor Fernando Zhang. Madam Deputy, the original surplus was said to be one hundred one hundred and twenty billion, now it's been adjusted upward to one hundred and thirty eight billion and the latest figure is a one hundred and forty eight point nine billion dollars. So the margin error is the biggest so far, it's an error of one hundred and thirty odd billion dollars. Although we expect that the government's balance ship will not be wrong to by a large margin, but we have been making wrong guesses and projections over the years. But this FS, the current FS, is wrong to a greater extent than his predecessors. Very often, the revenue is underestimated, then they expanded, or overestimated. Therefore, the budget tends to be conservative, all past budgets present a pattern of a surplus, then a bigger surplus, and after and then the next budget also gives you even bigger surplus. So it was projected to be a deficit of sixty billion. We ended up with twenty billion in surplus, that was in the day of Mr. Liang Liangkamchong. And then there was another estimate, a surplus, a deficit of forty billion dollars was turned out to be a surplus of sixty billion dollars. So we have been doing this all the time, and we have been having one surplus after another. This is a happy problem for government officials. They should be happy about this. And now the problem they have is, how can they find some way to spend the money? If they don't know how to spend the money, then they give people handouts. FS would meet legislators before the budget is prepared. So we would expect that you will listen to us, and you are sincere in listening to us. This is the system, and that is the government collects tax from the community, which represent the public resources. And if you don't know how to use those resources, and you have to give some back, then it means that you don't know how to be the government, you don't know how to use those resources. And now it has become a habit, we are doing it every year. But of course, the formats, the modes of giving handouts might be different. So I did say that please spend resources on the problems that we are facing, on the challenges ahead, and on the improvement of our people's livelihood. Let's not talk about politics or economics, because whatever we do, we all want to improve people's livelihood. Since the important thing is to improve people's livelihood, then we look at the hardship that people face, the biggest ones that people are facing. There are many people living in subdivided flats, they live in cramped environments, they don't even have a normal living environment, and we have people suffering from diseases who cannot afford to buy medicine they need, such as cancer patients. And the healthcare system is unravelling, it is, this is on the brink of collapse, and many people have to wait for a long time to to have consultations, and in hospitals, it's so cramped as if we are we are in a battlefield. So these are problems felt by all our people, and then there are people who are leading a very difficult life, and there are still elders who have to make some, earn some income by scavenging paper and waste. And the people with disabilities are still leading difficult lives. And then there is a property problem, particularly among the elderly. And now, since you have the resources, you should spend some money on those in need. You have been, the government has been saying that you should help those with needs. But now, you don't know how to spend so much money. And you give out, give handouts in the form of rebates and rates, or salary tax, or profits tax, one year after another. Do they really need help? Look at the landlords, their their assets are getting more and more valuable. Why should you give that much to landlords owning so many properties? So this year, the number one beneficiary will get one hundred million dollars in rebate of a waiver of rates. So on the one hand, we have patients who cannot afford their medicine, but then on the other, you give a hundred million dollars to a big property owner. He's already very rich, and yet you want to give him a hundred million dollars. And we have a well kept problem. The more handouts you give in such manners, people will just feel that this is a continuous problem. I know that you asked me to wrap up after seven or eight minutes. I'm supposed to talk about the the clauses with no amendment. Well, I've been talking about this for ten years, but I'm I'm not listened to. I don't know whether they are under certain some spell, magic spell, that they would continue to do this in an inequitable way. So we have, on the one hand, hardworking people trying to make a living. They work long hours. And I would say that our work ethics are among the best in the world. We have reports to prove that we work the longest hours, and our efficiency is very, is among the best. People are conscientious and they work hard. That's, and that's why we have a very well-developed economy, but all they are doing is just to make a living. Why is it that with our economic development so well-developed, so well-advanced, that people are still having so low in living standards? If you have, if you want to get a decent compensation, and you get reasonable the living standard with income increasing in line with inflation and more, but the government has a reserve of more than a trillion dollars, and then year after year, you have a surplus, a budget surplus, and you don't seem to be doing a lot to address our problems. So people think that you might as well give the money back to me. So we're talking about very low grade of governance. I don't know how this system would be would be eliminated. And the government will continue to take care of investment of our surplus and reserve. And that will be sufficient to sustain the community, while at the same time, the majority of our people are suffering. Turning back to these clauses with no amendment, covering the certain bureaus. Let me talk about healthcare. The Food and Health Bureau and the Department of Health are involved here. Very little is done to improve and to reform the healthcare system. We have to look at the whole delivery process of healthcare services and the financing of such services. Don't just say that we give another two hundred billion dollars for the second phase of hospital development, that's all. Would be okay for all of us, or you have spent more than eleven minutes on this particular part. But this is, I'm talking about the portfolio done under the FHB, so I'm actually not digressing. When I met with the FS, I was referring to a fund on the provision of drugs, lifesaving drugs, Dandili and Fund. Well, these are drugs for rare diseases are expensive because of the potential, small size of the potential market, and the pharmaceutical companies are not going to invest so much, and therefore the cost of development is high.
For cancer treatment, whether it be target therapy or immunotherapy, the drugs are going to be expensive, and as we have a special fund, we otherwise rely on the Lumsom Grants, that sixty billion dollars from the government to the HA. It will be hard for the HA, it has to take care of the medication needs of over seven million people in Hong Kong, and cost effectiveness will be the primary concern of the HA. Because of cost effectiveness concern, these drugs can never be included into the drug formulary. And expensive drugs cannot be included into the drug formulary. The Samaritan Fund and the Community Care Fund have lots of restrictions. As a result, many patients are deprived of proper treatment because of a lack of means, and this is against the government's slogan, which is no one will be deprived of adequate healthcare due to a lack of means. And in fact, this is happening every day, so we propose to spend twenty billion dollars to set up such a fund. Well, we still have many members waiting to speak, so please be as concise as possible. Please continue. All right, I've only got one minute left anyway. So, so much on healthcare, I have only scratched the surface of healthcare. I have only talked about medication and also need for medication, and there are other needs under healthcare. I will not take up other members' time, I will, I give the floor to other members, I hope I have the opportunity to speak again, thank you. Mr. Eddie Ju.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. Well, this is outrageous, I think even numbers from the Prosestishment Camp will agree that we won't even have the chance to comment on the budget when the first motion, first debate will come to a close. I'd like to say to the Secretary for Education that I'm speaking in my mother tongue, and that is Cantonese. There are three areas, and the budget already touched on by other colleagues. The first is of course, many people will say that this year's budget has got the estimates wrong again. We have a surplus of over a hundred billion dollars. And if you look at the administration's explanation on expenditure later, you have the impression that we focus on that one hundred and forty billion dollars of surplus and how it should be spent. Fifty billion dollars will be spent on innovation technology, the secretary is not here. People will have the impression that because I have a hundred and thirty billion dollars in surplus, the extra money will go to INT, and then the balance will be shared with the community in the form of rates rebate and two extra months of social security payments. And then it gave rise to a controversy over how money should be handed out. In fact, this is very strange, if INT is among your policies, then you should not give people the impression that because you have a surplus of over a hundred billion dollars, you should spend fifty billion dollars on INT. It should be included in your planned expenditure to show the public that you attach significance to INT, whether you have the money or not, you're going to spend that fifty billion dollars. When you don't have the money, you can take it from the Fiscal Reserve. So this is the first confusion in the concept, and I agree with a member that money, giving, handing out money is a very low form of administration. But even so, it was done in such a clumsy manner, so I suggest to set some standards for the future. For the coming five years, the maximum surplus projected would only be forty point six billion dollars at most. Now, let me draw a line here. Any surplus beyond fifty billion dollars should be evenly shared among all people in Hong Kong. So there won't be any argument anymore. Don't introduce a race concession, and when you're criticized, you have a discaring and sharing scheme. Let's not do that next year. And I'd like to respond to what Mr. Wilson Au said. He said that because public housing is in a dire situation, variable land formed should not be sold to the private sector for building flats that we cannot afford. And I think this begs the question of whether we should continue to dispose of land this way. My suggestion to Mr. Au is, while I'll agree with you, I hope Mr. Au and his Prosestishment colleagues can use their action to express their anger. So if you think that land sold to the private sector for building luxury flats is like selling away your sons, then you should at least vote against the motion. At least, you should tell them that you're going to vote against the budget in order to have bargaining chips. So you shouldn't have voted for the second reading debate when you talked of when you criticized the budget. In this addendum to the budget, the FS said that he was not going to heed your request, because from twenty eighteen nineteen to twenty twenty two twenty three, revenue from land sales will continue to follow this formula of GDP times three point six percent, and by the time it is twenty twenty two twenty three, land sales will reach one hundred and twenty three odd billion dollars. So even though we are making a windfall, and we, even the FS cannot tell how much it has, it will continue to sell its son away, so to speak, will continue to sell land for, to the private sector. So the government is willing to save the market, but not the people. So you should look at this addendum and see what they plan to do in the coming five years, and you get the answer there, they will pay more, they will care for the market more than for the people. And thirdly, while we are in this dire situation, I am against selling more land for building private housing. The majority of our population should be allowed to live happily in subsidized housing, and so more land should be devoted to this sector. And the FS will ask without profits from land sales to the tune of a hundred billion dollars, what should I do? There will be a gap. In fact, this gap can be filled at any time. And how? By means of our exchange fund. Now, the government keeps telling us that we have trillions of financial reserve. In fact, it should be forty trillion, four trillion, four trillion, if we take into account the exchange fund, four trillion. The investment income in twenty seventeen was two hundred and fifty two billion dollars. But in this book, it's only thirty nine point seven billion dollars of investment return. That means investment return from research from exchange fund, less the capital has been kept in that pool without putting into our recurrent operating account to satisfy various needs of society. The money can be spent so that we can reduce land sales. And this is not the first time I have proposed this. In twenty oh six, Mr. Howard Young moved a motion amended by Mr. Chen Kam Lam. A motion was passed in this council to urge the administration to increase or to increase the percentage of investment return from the exchange fund back to our operating account. And last year, it was two hundred and fifty two billion dollars, but only thirty nine point seven billion dollars was included in our accounts. That motion was supported by DAB. Now, if we've got four trillion dollars in our public coffers, we can use investment return from this four trillion dollars, and that will be sufficient for us to deal with deep-seated conflicts. Of course, I don't have time to come to the question of how we should spend our money. Unfortunately, the biggest problem with this government is it doesn't know how to spend money it has wisely. But because of an unreasonable decision by the president to curb our speaking time, we cannot go into each and every heads of this motion. I urge members to press the request to speak button aggressively. Don't pay heed to his decision to cut the debate at seven PM. Why? I think I even, Madam Deputy, you feel that we haven't spoken our minds fully yet. In special, I see you may say this in your so many things to say, I dare not press the button. But this is a debate on the budget, and if we dare not press the request to speak button, that means that there can be no debate in this council. I urge all members from the Prosestishment Camp and the Democratic Camp to come down and press the speak button, so that the president understand that this debate cannot end by seven PM. Mr. Chen Kim Po.
Thank you, Madam Deputy, for allowing us this opportunity to comment on the budget in general. One objective of the budget is to promote economic growth and to create wealth, to provide jobs. And the second is to make use of our public resources to improve livelihood and to help the community. I think the budget has, the FS has done its very best. We have a record-high surplus this year, in fact, it should be a good thing, but we have a happy problem here. The whole community focuses on how money should be handed out to everyone in Hong Kong, and that has sparked a heated debate. And the huge investment the government has made into our community has been overlooked. The expenditure has risen to four oh six point five billion dollars, up eleven point eight percent, the highest in twenty years, and it's also higher than the average in the past seven years. For instance, we are going to increase expenditure on health by thirteen point four percent, and also education, five point six percent, equivalent to eighty four billion dollars. And these are areas that count for the majority of government expenditure, and most of the money will spend on the needy. Eighty billion, twenty billion dollars on cultural, culture development, and twenty billion dollars on INT, and also fifty billion dollars on继续教育 fund, and also raise concession and extra months of social security allowances.
When it comes to cash handout, well, every year, there will be relief measures announced in the budget. It seems that it is a routine now. In the past, a lot of people asked questions as to why, when the economy is doing well, we still give cash handout. Few people ask for cash handout, but the announcement of the budget is at the time when there was the by-election. A lot of political parties ask for cash handouts, and the government changes mind to give cash handout. I support refunding of tax and rates to the middle class. I don't oppose to cash handout, but it should be limited to grassroots and those who are in need. Apart from the cash handouts, I do think that the budget has a high score, but there are two long-term challenges. First, diminishing of competitiveness and an aging population. With a huge surplus, the financial philosophy of a miser should be changed. I do see a change in this philosophy recently. I support it. We have been to the Bay Area recently, we have felt a huge potential of development. We have been relying heavily on real estate as well as financial services. We have neglected other industries. We have entered an era of innovation and technology. Technology has been greatly used. If we don't catch up, we will be left behind. A lot of resources has been used in innovation and technology, two hundred, twenty billion dollars in the River Loop, and ten billion dollars for two platforms, and another ten billion dollars of INT companies. In the past two months, there were, there were very few discussions about the use of these huge sums. I hope that subsidized organizations will properly use the money. When it comes to financial services, we have to consolidate our status. We do need to make use of fintech. Education is very important. Make use of the fintech. Education is very important. Well, about uh. A hundred and eleven billion dollars has been devoted to education, an increase of twenty eight percent, two billion dollars is recurrent fund. And uh two point five billion dollars will be for university and uh two point five billion dollars to support school activities. And also injection to the Continuous Education Fund. A lot of resources will be devoted and if we still don't do well uh on education, then we need to be punished. With an aging population, there will be huge impact on our healthcare system. We do need a reform. The budget responds to public aspiration. Well, there will be funding. Uh further funding for um the second ten year uh hospital development program through the H A. Three hundred billion dollars has been set aside. Without huge surplus, um this cannot be realized. Six billion dollars will be used, uh will be given to H A. And a number of uh sums will be devoted to development plans and Chinese, traditional Chinese medicine. It shows the determination of the government to resolve healthcare problems. But sometimes we do need to do something about um manpower. Training alone is not enough. We do need to think about how to resolve shortage of manpower, say for example, import of. Importation of um healthcare professionals to practice in Hong Kong. Welfare. When it comes to non recurrent expenditure, one billion dollars uh is used on your um German technology. And the um short term uh food assistance scheme is enhanced as well. There is also three hundred billion, uh three hundred million dollars as well as a hundred and sixty million dollars to enhance elderly care services. There will also be enhancement of those suffering from dementia. There will also be uh additional funding for outreach um. Schemes uh by doctors. I've given you a little bit of numbers because nobody else has. Our policy has lagged behind by ten years compared to Singaporean government. A lot of international companies have chosen Singapore. Hong Kong domicile companies has done that as well. That's why we have uh been stagnant. Well, the um insurance authority, well, will study about how to enhance our competitiveness. It's including, say, for example, tax concessions. I do believe that with these done, our competitiveness will incre- will increase. There will also be tax deductions offered to encourage um people to equip themselves, say for example. And annuity schemes will enjoy tax deductions. I hope that a good use of insurance policies to deal with aging population will help. Bayve- Bay Area will um inject um. New energy into the sector. I hope that the insurance sector will benefit. So the Hong Kong registered companies uh will enjoy a lower entry threshold by setting up a wholly subsidiary companies. There should be policies to allow Hong Kong companies to make use of the internet to sell residents in Hong Kong and Bay Area. Um qualified insurance policies. Federation of Insurers should set, can set up a platforms for people to choose um suitable policies. The platform will enable um f- f- full of fund and these policies products will be protected by Hong Kong law. I do think that um this will tie in national development and will benefit Hong Kong people. Thank you, Miss Eunice Yong. New People Party in this budget between January and March met with the F S three times. We've talked about healthcare, education, youth development, district planning, civil service benefits. E-sports, economic development, education, we have made a number of suggestions. On the twenty eighth of February, the F S announced the budget. But they have not, he has not achieved sharing um the fruit of development with people. There has been a lot of um controversial. Comments saying that um it is not easy to see whether we're, whether um we're eligible. For the four thousand dollars, we don't know how to calculate the difference. A lot of people come to our ward offices to ask details. They left comments on the Facebook page. They criticized the government for making it complicated. I hope the government will listen to the public to try to simplify application and vetting. It seems that the government has put itself in Windows ninety five. With big data and analytics, then there will be easy sharing of information. People can just press a button in front of the computer to see whether they are eligible. A few years later or in the future, I hope to see that. The budget also mentions about eight billion dollars to improve district facilities. Recently, Shatin District Office submitted a paper to the District Council saying that under this measure in Tai Wei. Uh village South Roll, a new government complex will be built to provide small libraries, uh general outpatient unit. Meeting rooms, multipurpose rooms, um a neighborhood center for the elderly as well as a public park. This is the municipal complex. Population increase uh in twenty twenty four, Shatin in Taiwan will increase to seven hundred and twenty thousand. A lot of district facilities are old, especially public markets. Taiwan market. Has just uh. Um attracted some attention about um reinstalla- uh retro installation of air conditioners. So we ask for a municipal complex to be built in Taiwan. I asked question back in twenty sixteen November. Ask for the same thing. Now, Mr. Chan, the F S replied. Well, he replied to me back then saying that there was no plan. I'm happy to see that there is finally a green light. The complex will be built. It's late, but it's better than never. Facilities provided doesn't include public market. We hope the X H A B will listen to um requests from the community. And reposition this com- complex to meet residents' needs. I myself and Taiwan residents look forward to this complex. There'll be two billion dollars earmarked for market modernization program in the coming ten years. I've already spoken about uh ma- public markets. We have modernized market, but what is, what is it? Just to improve ventilation, to have air conditioning installed and to improve fire services installations. We hope we get new ideas from the government. We hope that um it should move ahead with the times, say for example, e-payment, smart vending machine. And improved market management. We hope that the government will use um innovation and technology. On the twenty third of November twenty sixteen, I moved a motion in Legco to promote competitiveness. To fight against link writ. We'll have to uh properly deal with problems of inadequate district facilities. More services should be provided. More choices outside Lingrit should be provided to fight against the monopoly of link, of the link. When it comes to uh public sector healthcare facilities, there will be funding provided for new and um. Expansion of hospitals, but most of them are in N T West. In N T East, there is a lo- very long waiting time and inadequate healthcare facilities. Little has been done. We don't know if N T East residents uh will be given more. On environment. On the environment, a lot of people in the recycle industry said to me that there was a one billion dollar recycle fund in twenty fifteen. Com- eh application is difficult. There was only a five percent success rate. It hasn't uh promoted development in the industry. I hope the application process will be streamlined, threshold will be lowered so that smaller scale operators can benefit. So uh lower and middle streamed recyclers will be given more, more help to energize their operation. When it comes to development of esports in the budget, a hundred million dollars will be earmarked to support its development. Cyberport Arcade will be turned into an esports venue. To a certain extent, they have responded to us. I hope that the sector and the government will strengthen training uh of development of esports. This is a way to help um enhance mobility amongst youngsters. Lastly, I would like to talk about civil servants. A number of occasions, we have said that group insurance should be uh provided for civil servants. I've asked written questions, but the secretary said that um well, to purchase the insurance. Private insurance policies for civil servants will um bring a serious financial burden. I'm very disappointed with the reply and at the same time, I will continue to ask. The government to improve civil servants' benefit. I hope that next time in the next budget, more benefit will be provided. To serving or soon to retire civil servants, I so submit.
Mister Ma Feng Guo. Madam Deputy, this is the first budget that delivered by the current term of government. The F S has invested a lot of resources in many different areas because of the surplus we have. I would like to comment on these uh uh areas. From month twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, the expenditure on sport and culture is uh. Increased to six point six billion dollars for sport, such as uh an injection into elite sports fund. When the announcement was made that an investment would be one billion, I already said back then that it was insufficient. Because the elite sports and athletes uh would need more support because of increasing number of uh sports uh and athletes. So this year, the additional injection of five billion dollars into the elite sports fund is a response to our call. And then there would be another five hundred mi- million dollars for the mega event fund. And also one billion dollars for the Hong Kong Sports Institution and a hundred million dollars in the development of district facilities. I support these, but uh the, in in fact, more should be given to district uh sports associations to promote sports for all in the districts. L C S T are going to review the uh the the grants scheme. Uh covering the uh ability of N S A's to uh attract and retain their work, their their employees. These employees have contributed to the development of sports, but because of resources uh. Limited resources, they are unable to, the N S A's are unable to retain the and uh these people. So uh the remunerations uh offered by N N S A should be improved. So that they can more able to attract the necessary talent. On cultural front. Apart from the twenty billion dollars uh on the improvement of facilities, this year we are going to have another twenty billions on the. Uh redevelopment and uh and improvement of cultural facilities. This is a piece of good news. And the government has already the. Submitted a proposal to the Home Affairs Panel on the necessary the. Improvement works. We hope that this can be implemented uh very quickly so as to provide quality venues for the sector. And then NGOs will be given one hundred million dollars to cover capital costs when they uh. And they apply for shortened tendencies of awakened premises, government premises. Would like to make the best use of awakened government land and school premises. To, for different cultural, cultural, culture related premises. In the past, they, they, the applicant had to undergo a lot of complicated procedures and there will be. Uh difficulties faced in the conversion and uh improvement works. So if more subsidy is given to the applicants, they will, the, this scheme will be more affordable. On top, the government should streamline the procedure for applicants. To facilitate the use of awakened school premises, so that we can make the best use of the land we have. On the sub- subsidy to ask groups, five five fifty five million dollars will be provided additionally. And the A D C will be given another five hundred million dollars in matching the schemes. The original three hundred million dollars. Uh is now the. Expand is now the one hundred and twenty million less because some have been spent. The matching scheme uh require. A very high threshold for matching grant to be approved. The strict conditions are so stringent, some ask groups are deterred. So while the provision is, has increased. Uh the government should relax the criteria so that more the ask groups can get sponsorship from the business sector to promote their development. From twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, under the budget, the recurrent expenditure will increase by fifteen. Fifty million dollars for, for the organization of seminars and exhibition in other countries. And also there will be a more su- support for exchanges program in the Bay Area. Artists and art groups have to pay a lot more in additional cost when they go for such exchange activities. Many. Have to foregone such opportunities because of the lack of means. Therefore, by providing more the subsidy to ask groups so that they can be involved in more the exchange programs. It would be a welcome move. I welcome more funding to be provided to cultural programs. Yes, we are seeing more resources allocated, but we don't see a clear direction for the way forward. All these measures are piecemeal in nature. The F S has said that there will be new philosophy in the fin- public finance management. But the new source, resources are all. Are given in the form of injection to certain funds or uh or dedicated uh allo-. Dedicated for some activities. The government should come up with a long term roadmap. And also to come up with a new budgets in the light of the policy for, for the future. Uh it, there's only one hundred words in the budget speech referring to the creative industry. And the Create Smart Initiative will get uh another billion dollars. Apart from that, there's no new initiative. In the past. Years. We have only got a num- a small number of applications uh of. Approved under this uh Create Smart Initiative for funding purposes. We cannot rely on this initiative alone. There should be other policy measures to support the creative industries. If we look at the publishing industry, the industry would like to have more measures to improve. Uh. Reading, to to improve read, promote the reading habit, and they also want to introduction of lending right to four of us for library books. Uh this C uh sup- supports this, and this is in her election manifest manifesto. We have to have certain sessions on that is on, on the, on discussing the way forward. And then there are two hundred million dollars who will be expanded for the promotion of reading. This is regardless insufficient, but the industry has uh. Agreed to lend their support to this, but there's no development and progress, no progress made on the. But there's no development and progress, no progress made on the question of lending right. And there's no positive response to the industry's aspirations. I hope the government would come up with a clear response very soon to the industry. What is more attractive in the budget is the handouts and tax concessions like other budgets. But in the past, P L H tenants were give, were the given the rent subsidy, but not this year. And now the the government has heeded public opinion in that people who are not benefited by these measures will be given a handout of four thousand dollars in under the caring and sharing policy. This is not the first time that handouts are given, but no praise is received by the government. We have a happy problem of a of a large surplus year after year. Many people agree that giving handouts and and concessions is not the way to go for in the in the long term. The public would like the government to be more proactive in resolving problems, especially land problem and the problems associated with the aging population. The government should heed the people's needs and come up with a long term solution for these problems. With this remark, I support the passage of the Appropriation Bill. Miss Presidella. This is a very popular TV program. Long life up to hundred twenty years. Why is this popular? Because we are going to be a city of elders. Those who were born in the baby boom era in the fifties and sixties would become the elders very soon. Many people are considering what they should, what they should do after retirement. Can they retire now? Should they retire early? Can they afford retirement? Very soon, this will be an issue for many generations. And you will see one around you, like the seven eleven convenience stores in the in the community. And young people will face pressure in providing support to elders. And these people are just sixty. And then if their children cannot afford to buy their homes. And then when they re- when they retire, they would sell take out a mortgage to help their children to buy a home. These baby boomers work very hard. And they have developed Hong Kong as it as cities. And with hard work, they have been managed to become middle class people. But a few of these people, only a few people can be, can live up to a hundred twenty. But what if they retire at half that age? Can can they still lead a quality life? Not everyone is Mr. Lee Ka Sheng. What if they cannot afford the retirement life? Once they retire, they don't have a job, they don't have an income, they don't have a pension. And they have reluctantly become a liability. I want to say something on behalf of these who are in the age bracket of sixty to sixty four, who have just retired. And talk about how we should do, how we should, as a matter of responsibility, take care of them. Because it 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 works both ways. It benefits everyone. Because if we allow them to rejoin the job market, it would lessen our burden. There are six thou- it said that six thousand elders die while waiting for a place in O C H, in an O C H E in Taiwan. This is a model uh home. Called Swang Lien Home. Some twenty eight delegations from the mainland have visited this elderly center. It would require a lot of planning if we are to do the same. And we need with neighboring areas in exploring the possibilities. I think the government should consider this. We should work for the long term goals. A few years ago, I said I talk about a movie called The Intern, starred by Robert De Niro. And that is about a retiree rejoining an organization uh run by young people, and he contributes to the improvement of that company. So this C E F should provide support to the people up to the age of seventy. And also to the, you you should cancel the the requirement of age and also the maximum number of applications. We should allow them to to develop a second career and they would lead as another life. On the mainland, we have people who are in their seventies learning to dance ballet. And then in Korea, you have elders acting as models or as extras in film productions. They can earn a a living out of it. So how can we ensure that these people who can work or who are willing to work will be able to do so? The U N has changed the delineation of young and old. Those who are in, who are sixty would be just in between young and old. And there's a survey conducted by the West Kowloon in the entity. Ninety percent of them say, of the respondents say that they are insufficient community support. Seven percent of them would like to work although they have retired.
I have to praise the government because it's willing to support uh provide a subsidy to employers willing to employ those who are between sixty and sixty five for twelve months. And then there will be another three hundred billion dollars for the second ten year hospital development plan plan and the public annuity schemes will be expended. Those who would like to invest for up to two million dollars can um be given, can yield ten thousand odd dollars per month in return. And the government is willing to consider that. And some would like to make use of the reverse mortgage scheme, but they don't know which organization will be tasked to do it. And they don't know whether the organization is reliable. Because after they have mortgaged their property, that will mean investment income for them, retirement income for them. So the government should provide a policy to assist them to uh enhance their confidence. There should also be underwriting on the part of the government uh in case of um of some hiccups. The government should give them undertaking because many people are thinking about reverse mortgage. These people don't want to receive C S S A, they want to work part time. But then traveling costs and meal costs are very expensive. Even if you patronize a canteen in an industrial building, you can ask the workers. The meals are expensive. Now they have lost their job after retirement. They don't no longer have medical insurance coverage. You ask Mister Chiang Kim Po, they have no protection at all after they turn sixty. Now, Mister Lo Shi Gao, the secretary is here. Now, these are two dollar for everyone. Please don't close the door. Now they can come to work part time jobs, they can remain happy and we may in the end spend less on healthcare for them. And then when they don't have medical insurance coverage, then dentists, seeing a dentist can be very expensive. I hope you can have a mobile dental services in the whole territory. And I think not just the elderly, but young kids and also the not so mobile persons can also benefit. I hope that the administration can provide assistance and resources. They may want to be entrepreneurs. The Great Bay Area should not just be meant for young people. So the fund should not just be for young people, even if it comes from an elderly person. If the idea is good, can they be allowed? I think the government should think out of the box. And we must grasp this opportunity. I have to say that the opportunities are bound in Hong Kong. We have developed an initiative and the Great Bay Area Development. But we are we are bogged down by internal conflicts because of Occupy Central Movement and other things. Many families feel lost and when they retire, they want to move overseas. Right. Uh when Mister Qiao Yang Yang said that the constitution and the country's fate are related, one country, two systems is meant to resolve the problems of Hong Kong and Macau. When we were, well, at the handover, we wanted to uh be a jewel of the country. So I hope we can educate the public so that they understand the significance of the constitution to our people. So that the um uh overreaction due to misunderstanding of the country and constitution can be avoided. Thank you.
This is around six twenty P M. We will enter this debate at around seven P M. I will allow Miss Alice Mack, Mister Alon Kenneth Long, Mister Lam Chak Ting and Miss Claudia Mill and Doctor Kwakaki and Mister Ray Chen and Mister Arnold King to speak. And I will invite the secretary to reply after these members have spoken. And then we will put this item to the vote. So may I urge members to be as succinct as possible. Miss Alice Mack.
Thank you. Uh this budget is a rather controversial one. On Facebook, I'm sure members have seen comments by members of the public. Earlier this year, F T U suggested that given the expected surplus, this year we suggested cash handouts to everyone in Hong Kong. I think this is the first time we have asked for this. We rarely do this. A large proportion of the surplus would come from stem duty, from the property market and stocks and shares. Well, property speculation and and stocks and shares are not everyone's occupation in Hong Kong. And so we hope that we can all benefit from surplus from these areas. Unfortunately, many parties came out to oppose. And the government would of course relent after there's opposition from the community. When we say that giving out a cash handouts is unfair, then why is a tax and rates rebate fair? When people, even though you may say that some people will get the cash handout for buying a new mobile phone or to go on an overseas trip. Why, why, why wouldn't someone who gets a tax rebate buy a new mobile phone or travel? Now, if next year we are so fortunate as to have another huge surplus, we must think of a way which can benefit everyone. If comprehensive cash handout, universal cash handout is not workable, then we must think of a way to benefit everyone. Now, four thousand dollars under the caring and sharing scheme. Well, as the F S said, housewives and newly retirees can also receive four thousand dollars. But the procedures are too cumbersome. I hope that it will not be asked to fill out too many things. I think you will only add to the workload of legislators. At the end of the day, it will be our water officers who help members of the public to fill out the forms. You should make the procedures as simple as possible so that we can all receive four thousand dollars. The sooner the better. The budget has got a lot of things, but the focus is still on whether there should be cash handed out to everyone. Now, for some of the areas we have been following, I think the budget has incorporated some of our requests, including spending on healthcare. So in addition to the first ten year hospital development plan, the second ten year plan is already in the pipeline. This is very important to development of infrastructure for our healthcare system. But more important still, although it may not be admitted by everyone, but the fact is in our public healthcare sector, money may be a problem. System is an even bigger problem. And manpower is the greatest problem. We don't have enough manpower. While the government would like to train more local doctors, people worry that there may be a surplus of manpower and new graduates may not be hired. But the budget has made it very clear that it will ensure that the H A has sufficient resources to recruit all medical graduates every year. I hope this can be realized so that we can train more local doctors so that we have a sufficient supply of doctors in our public healthcare sector to address the manpower shortage. And I note that there will be another two hundred million dollars for H A for specialists and um extra training. But for supporting staff such as water assistants and care workers, they lack sufficient training. And that affects their promotion prospects. So in addition to giving money to the H A, the government must monitor how it spends its money. I hope that the money will not be spent to fatten the upper echelon of the H A. When frontline workers would always lose out, for instance, five hundred million dollars have been promised by the C E to take care of the flu surge. In fact, frontline staff cannot benefit and they are worse off after that five hundred million dollars is given. On another occasion, I'll explain to you the reason why. There is one point in the budget which has come from a longtime suggestion of the F T A. That is, uh Committee for Ethic Minorities will be, steering committee will be chaired by C S four A and five hundred million dollars is reserved for the work of the committee. While we are crying out for labor in Hong Kong, I hope the administration can understand this. In Hong Kong, we have tremendous labor potential yet to be unleashed. And they include our ethnic minorities. They have a big problem with employment. It's not that they are unwilling to work. But sometimes because of a language barrier and support they need, they cannot work. We must spend this five hundred million dollars properly to support employment of ethnic minorities. In twenty sixteen, one thousand and forty three ethnic minorities registered with the Labor Department. Do you know how many of them eventually got referred to a job? Well, there was only, there were only eighty two, less than ten percent of the number registered. So in terms of assistance for ethnic minorities and employment, a lot uh leave leaves to be desired. And we have a suggestion here on how the resources should be spent. We can consider using the Middle Age Employment Support Scheme. We can set up a scheme. We can provide a subsidy to employers who are willing to employ ethnic minorities. Very often, employers are worried and they don't understand the situation and they're reluctant to hire E M's. I urge that employers be encouraged to employ E M's so as to ease the labor shortage in some sectors of the economy.
And I am a bit disappointed with the budget and the following point. We have a balance of seventy seven billion dollars in our housing fund. How are we going to spend it? Will it be for the H A to build flats when it is out of money? But I don't think this scenario will happen. All terms of governments claim that housing
All terms of governments claim that housing is their top priority. Given that we have such a big housing research fund. Now, we have got a spate-ready land in urban areas acquired by the Urban Renewal Authority. Uh we can spend the money on development of these lots so that we can have housing supply in the urban areas. If we allow U R A to continue to operate in the follow, in the current manner, and that is under the Urban Renew Ordinance, uh flats will be acquired and compensation will be on the basis of a seven-year flat in the same neighborhood. Then, uh when uh the flats are developed, then they are about to be more expensive than the existing stock. And uh the uh old occupants will be forced to uh move out of their familiar neighborhood. So uh the seventy-seven billion dollars can be used on production of public housing in conjunction with uh the Housing Society or U R A so that we can help our grassroots to satisfy their housing needs. I urge the administration to consider our proposal. Just this afternoon, I went to a luncheon meeting. There was a veteran um member from the property sector present. And he said, whether it be housing or land problem, we have uh debates after debates. And it all boils down to whether the government has the commitment and the uh determination to think out of the box and uh tackle this problem um of housing and land supply. Otherwise, no matter how many rounds of debates we have, the problem will be here to stay. I urge the F S to uh make good use of our surplus, the uh housing fund in particular, to address the uh housing problem of the community. Thank you.
Mr. Lam Ching Ting. This budget highlights the failure of uh the governance of the government. Well, there is a usual saying that um no matter how intelligent one is, without resources, you can't do anything. This time is the exact opposite. You have plenty of resources, but in the hands of someone who is an imbecile, nothing can be done. If I were the Financial Secretary and if I saw that the dra- the draft of the budget, I would ask a number of questions. First, who will benefit? How many people will benefit? How much public money will be used? Number is very important. If there is a large group of people who are left out by the budget, and if they are not rich, if there is strong public view and strong um opposing voices about the budget, then I would think, how many political parties, under public pressure, will will vote on my appropriation bill? There is only one conclusion that I can draw. The draft will not be able to garner general support in Legco. There are a lot of people who don't have to pay tax and a lot of people who pay very little tax. When the budget was first announced, these people don't benefit at all. And if they do, the benefit will be insignificant. The Financial Secretary and the Chief Executive were completely blind to the flaws of the budget. And it was announced in Legco. It highlights the failure of the government's governance. Why will there be tax? It's because of resources reallocation. Those who have the means, say for example conglomerates and the business, business sector, would need to give something for the resources to be real- reallocated to those in need in order to narrow the widen, uh narrow the wealth gap and in order to allay social injustice. As Dr. Fernando John said, that a government has always suffered from a lack of vision. They don't have the determination or the vision to address our deep-seated conflict. We talk about uh universal retirement protection. We have seen a lot of problem in our healthcare sector and in housing. The government does not have the ability, determination, and the wisdom to deal with these problems. During an economic downturn, the administration said that we will have to um spend very carefully. When there is a huge surplus, they don't know how to spend the money. And they got stuck as to how to give cash handout, to whom? How do we do it? What will be the administrative uh details? The more they try to do it, the messier it gets. The government has a lot of surplus. The best thing to do is to make long-term planning. Some people said, we do need more hardware, we do need more hospitals. People who know about our health, uh a problem in our healthcare system know that we are in, we suffer from an acute manpower shortage. Hardware is no problem because Legco will never stop you when it's reasonable if you want to build a hospital. Healthcare manpower. There is a shortage. Ms. Alice Mack said that she was aware that um the government will undertake to employ local graduates of medical schools. That is not enough. There are a lot of people, uh children of Hong Kong, uh people who are studying overseas. They have done really well academically. They have high qualifications. A lot of them study in Commonwealth, U K, Canada, New Zealand, Australia. These countries are on a par, if not better, when compared to Hong Kong in relation to healthcare quality. How come when they try to and uh pass it, when they sit for an examination here in Hong Kong to practice, uh the passing rate is so low? The government needs courage and determination to deal with this, with these problems. We have very wide wealth gap. We see a lot of old people scavenging for cardboard boxes. They can't make ends meet. A lot of grassroots families live in subdivided flats. They live in appalling places. It's even worse than um wooden huts in, back in the sixties. Because back then, you had more space. But now, you squeeze yourself into a subdivided flats of just several dozens square feet. You can't move because no matter where you go, you're right in front of the toilet bowl. Hygiene is horrendous. It continued to get worse. There is a saying on the internet that U K government lets people who live in wooden house to move into um public housing and then to home ownership scheme units. But now, people have to live in subdivided flats. You need to seize the chance when you have sound financial backing to plan for the future of Hong Kong and to address deep-seated housing, he- healthcare, and universal retirement protection. I so submit. Mr. Kenneth Long. This is the first budget of the F S in this government. In the budget, he mentioned seven points um in his financial philosophies. Say for example, uh to enhance services, to invest in the future, et cetera. You need to cast your vision far eh into the future when you consider this um budget. It's just like uh I said, episode one of five episodes. I hope that he would not just rehash the same idea. Well, let's look at the seven uh fin- fi- uh fiscal philosophy when it comes to enhancing services. Well, the administra- the government provides different services to the public. I would like to comment on a number of departments. First, Government Flying Service. This afternoon, my colleague, Mr. Jeremy Tam, has already spoken about how to improve the quality of the G F S. The second one is the Marine Department. Uh report sixty-nine cap- um chapter two of um the P A C said that um, well, the Audit Commission has conducted a complete comprehensive audit. And it's, and it was found that because of manpower shortage and operational flaws when it comes to uh procurement of vessels and equipment, has been slow. Maintenance fees have increased as a result. Safety um and durability of uh government vessels are affected. A lot of ranks, especially professional ones, say for example, um ship surveyor, there has been a, a lot of people retiring and there is also a high wastage. So um their work has been affected. I hope that more resources can be given to the Marine Department because it has a direct impact on marine safety. Another department that I often mention is the Internal Revenue Department. You may notice that every time, um every year, we have about seven to ten uh Internal Revenue Amendment Bills, not just one or two. Well, we have E O I, we have a uh automatic exchange of information. We have also B A Ps um based um based um erosion and um profit transfer. As a result, we need to introduce legislative amendment. But we do need a team of the I R D who, uh that is experienced with a lot of resources backup. Well, we've just increased uh one chief assessor looking at international tax. Do we need an assistant commissioner to ensure that coordination of the work is properly done? I do believe that workload will continue to climb. I'm also concerned about the convenience of use of public services. Report number seven of the Audit Commission in relation to O G C I O's effort to promote wider use of um information technology. I'm not going to go into detail. In short, well, where there should, where there is, there should be Wi-Fi, there is none. And Wi-Fi speed is very slow. Service providers can't provide quality service and all that is very disappointing. I've also learned that our Customs and Exercise Department, as well as the um Economic Development uh Commerce and Economic Development Bureau, organized, well, uh put in place an electronic platform of a single window trade, trading. We have lagged behind a lot. In the year twenty twenty-three, this a single window um customs decoration service will be put in place. We have been talking about smart city for a very long time. But these basic measures are not even in place. I hope the government will pick its pace up. When it comes to financial services, I see a new product. Well, not new per se, but there is some coverage to develop bond market. There is the conventional bond market as well as green bond. There is one that will be a three-year pilot program um for first issuers to receive a subsidy subject to fifty percent of the total issuance, a subject to two point five million dollars. Also, tax deductions uh for the purchase of bonds will be increased. This is about um tr- conventional traditional bond. There is also green bond issuance program. I hope that the government will take the lead to issue more bonds. The um Quality Assurance Council of Hong Kong has recently launched a certification program for green bond. I hope that it, the quality will maintain, will, will can be maintained. This certification program, it is, it is not properly done, will exist in name only. There are many different products in our financial market. I do hope that uh bond can be further developed. We are a financial services center. Our products will have to be diversified. This is also a highlight of financial services development this year. When it comes to other areas, I will reserve my comment to the C S A stage, to committee stage. Mr. Ray Chen.
President, last week, we uh ended earlier than expected in the second uh reading debate. Some forty-odd members did not have a chance to speak back then. So today, uh you exercise your discretion to allow members to sort of digressing a bit to, so that they can speak on various issues to seven or eight minutes. I support this and I support uh further relaxation as well. But this also means that for members who uh follow your rules, who spoke last time as uh range, will only be able to get a chance to for one time here. It's just like the budget. It's not, you have not done a good job. I'm not trying to argue with you. I just want the public to know that last year, you allowed seven hours for this part of the debate. There were twenty-six heads last year. This year, we have seven hours for thirty-eight heads. Last time I had, I could speak for five times. I'm afraid that today I may not be able to speak more than once. I wanted to sa- I wanted to say about some four heads without amendments. And now I can only cover one. Some members have prepared speeches for ten heads. I want to talk about head one sixty, R T H K. Of course, I haven't uh um proposed any amendments to the expenditure of R T H K. Why? Because they are already getting very little, which is outrageously low. I used to work in for a radio station. I'm very concerned about the development of broad, the broadcasting industry. Uh radio service is now the uh a twilight industry. We have seen the collapse of digital broadcasters. And the in- investment environment of broadcasters is getting worse and worse. R T H K is a public broadcaster. The government has a duty to provide sufficient resources to uh to to it so that R T H K can provide decent services or quality services, quality public broadcasting services to the people. Si- Siu, Leng Chan Ying, the last C E, uh tried to suppress media. And now T H K was considered disobedient. Therefore, the resources dried up. The working hours uh got longer and the. And some of the T V the spectrum had to be shared. The resources given. Were disproportionate to the increase in services. Have you? Read this big document, I don't think many members would have done this. Uh there there are many uh highlights here. For debate like this, we should always try to read this big document, head one sixty, R T H K. If you compare this year's provision with the last year's, the increase is. Zero point one percent. For twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, matters are to. Matters. Work that have to be noted. But they have to produce programs to commemorate the ninetieth anniversary of public broadcasting. In twenty seventeen, the C E, Mrs. Carrie Lam, attended a function to present prices. The media saying that the uh freedom of speech and. Freedom of press are important, they are our core values. But when it comes to the public broadcaster, R T H K, have you the attached sufficient importance to service? In the next year, the number of broadcasting hours will continue to rise. It's a thirty six thousand hours. And also for public affairs and general T V program, they they are on the top of the list. And also, they have to step up news broadcasting. Because there are more the public affairs programs and there are more general programs. Is from uh two hundred ninety eight hours drastically increased to the four hundred thirty four hours. But the provision is going to get a tw- two point four percent increase. According to the Union of R T H K Staff. News and public affairs are their main uh programs, but they don't not getting resources. Manpower and equipment legs behind other broadcaster. Uh three more people have been recruited for the radio section and for the T V section, another five. So in terms of manpower, equipment, they're suffering from a very acute shortage. They have, it's not easy to sustain three cha-channels, three T V channels. Mrs. Carrie Lam attended a a. A function of the the Hong Kong Journalist Association. Saying that the R T H K services are not doing a very good job. And sometimes the T V channel only shows pictures, photos. And when we asked about his game about the coming uh games for L B G T. He said that the the T V programs of R T H K are not real much. And you don't give them resources and they're forced to to show the. Picture photographs instead of a moving image. For two-minute clip of a news report, they need a lot of people to do a lot of things and a lot of resources will be required. I I can't say any more than this. And also on the new broadcasting house project. In the uh special F C meeting, I asked a question about the progress of this project. And why was it not, why has it not been tabled to this council? In twenty fourteen, there was a plan at the cost of six billion dollars to build a broadcasting. House in outage in Chongkuan Old and the, it was attacked by the. Uh pro-acceptation camp and the voting result was fifteen for and fifteen against, a ten for and fifteen against. If the government wants to do, wanted to do this, they would keep on lobbying members. And there will be another application for funding. Have you visited the R T H K building? When it rains, you have water sipping from the ceiling and then. There is a real risk of electricity leakage. And also in the T V house at One A Broadcasting Road, they have, the building is very poor. And some equipment has to be dry by a fan after being dripped with water. And here, for under this big document, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, one of the matters. That they need to pay attention to is to the monitor, the. Project for the new broadcasting house. The government has said that there are no other department who are willing to share the use of the building. Have you tried to ask uh departments, other departments to do this? And also for Program Four, New Media, of Program Three, School Education Television Program, Program Four is a new media. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, the provision. And the out actual, actual. If you compare the actual expenditure with the original expenditure, it's minus seven point one percent. You want to the de- develop new media. And yet the expenditure suffers a negative seven point one percent reduction uh growth. What can they do? And this year, they are going to get uh an increase of one point two percent. Compared with other government departments expenditure, this is just a small drop in the bucket. So I hope the government would attach importance to the work of R T H K. And I want want to talk about E M S D, head forty two. And again, we need to look at this uh book, volume two for E M S D. Well, the uh numbers there are so good, which which is alarming. I'm particularly concerned about safety of lifts and escalators. There are some indicators, within forty days. Registration of contractors should be completed a hundred percent. Actual in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, they achieve a hundred percent. And also for the certificate, handling of certification, uh one sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, a hundred percent. Issuance of permits, one hundred percent, one hundred percent, all the way. Checking lifts and escalators. As a percentage of the num, the total number of lifts and eighteen, of escalators. From thirteen point seven percent to fourteen point eight percent last year to eighteen point four percent. So these figures look so good on on the face of. Of these, of them. But if I were to talk about the accidents and some members wanted to raise urgent questions. But if there's an accident, there's nothing you can do to help. For the matters requiring special attention in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, uh you could. Include here, that is to the. To promote public awareness. Even with the serious accidents at the Langkam Place. The responsibility is placed on the users. But the government is going to check a escalator with a length of more than fifteen minutes, fifteen meters. Most of them have to do with passenger po- issues, most of the problems. Are caused by passenger, passengers. So that's why they want to the teach people how to use escalators. I was told that you should not stand on the right side now so that people can pass on your left. And also they are going to look at the lifts and escalator ordinance and also to promote among stakeholders the relevant requirements. Don't think that the ordinance would serve its purpose once it's enacted. Although, if that's, if that's the case, that we wouldn't have so many ex- alarming accidents. Maybe you are too pleased with the very good records that you have. So I'm not trying to cut their uh budget. I believe they should step up inspection and strangely enforce safety rules. Last Friday, the E M S D issue a tendering document. And offer one point three million worth of uh. Supermarket coupons for distribution to uh staff. This is common practice, you can't reward your staff with cash, but you can give them, give cou- give coupons and checks. Of supermarkets or departments source. So at the end of the day, the the chain supermarkets would stand to benefit from such action. After government can review the guideline, thirty million dollars for supermarket. Give a coup- coupons, why don't you just pay them overtime in cash?
Doctor Kukaki, thank you, Chairman. Uh this is the first session of the debate on the appropriation bill twenty eighteen. There are thirty eight items without amendments. I understand that because um last weekend meeting was suspended. And the chairman has decided to let more members to speak on this session. However, I hope that the chair can give sufficient time for all members. Uh who would like to speak in this session. And this is more in line with the spirit of the council. Now, uh if it's not yet the deadline, so I give you the benefit of the doubt, Chairman. I hope that you will allow sufficient time for members who have haven't spoken in the second reading debate. To uh speak in this session. Because uh we, uh it is our duty to um monitor the government and uh the budget. By examine a budget, we're monitoring uh the performance of the government. Like to speak on Department of Health. Dental services are provided in forms or in form of oral health services for students and for dental treatment. The government would uh leave it to the private sector in the main. Unfortunately, there are only eleven public uh dental clinics. Uh that see outpatient, our patients. Eighteen in, uh eleven, eighteen districts, but they do not see uh public patients around the clock. Some may only have one day out of a week and in some districts, Chairman, you might. You should see for themselves, some elderly persons queue up as early as five A M in order to get a slot. And please don't think that public dental services will take care of all the dental needs of the elderly. It will only provide one service, one kind of service, emergency service in the form of tooth extraction. Well, however, some elderly persons have more than one tooth that have to be extracted. They may have three or four tooth teeth that have to be extracted. Every time when they arrive at a clinic, the staff will tell them that you can only remove one. Now, if you have three teeth that have suffered decay, you have to pick one. And for the remaining two, well, you cannot make any appointment. You have to come again at five A M next time to get a slot. So elderly persons have been waiting. For a long time at these clinics in order to get served. Some of them have to cross over to another district. For instance, the Kennedy Town Government Complex would only offer Monday and Wednesday mornings. To serve members of the public. We have seven hundred and forty thousand attendances and it will reach seven hundred and sixty thousand. Attendances, although for this year, for medical and healthcare. Uh we have increased spending to twenty one point five percent of the total government expenditure. But I'm afraid we have not increased expand provision for dental services. In the recent audit report by the Audit Commission. It is stated that the dental services are not properly delivered. We have many grassroots including the elderly that need dental services. There are un- taken up attendance slots and this is ridiculous. When resources are inadequate, the government is still allows these slots to be wasted. I think this is disappointing to the community. And the government has let down hundreds of thousands of elderly persons that have to queue up. In their early morning for a slot. Now, I wanted to move an amendment to increase provision to the Department of Health. But as we all know, uh under the um R O P, we can only cut its provision. We cannot add to it. And of course, I should not cut the provisions for the Department of Health. And yet I'm not allowed to provide more money to it because of the R O P. Although the government has a surplus of, predicted a surplus of hundred and thirty eight billion dollars. But the latest news is that there will be another ten billion dollars, close to a hundred and forty billion dollars in surplus. We have so much money, but for the elderly and grassroots waiting for dental care. Uh is this going to give them, do them any goo- good? The answer is no, and is the caring and sharing scheme going to help? The answer is no. Their request is very humble. We want that in all eighteen districts, we can have a clinic that provide two sessions. Five days a week to take care of the dental health of the elderly and grassroots. Uh the government may say that we're giving them medical and healthcare voucher scheme. But I'm afraid that the voucher scheme has only one purpose. And that is to make up for the uh. Shortfall in this very incomprehensive and inadequate house. Um services to the public. Now, we have a one thousand dollar extra in the voucher. I hope the elder will not spend it on fish more, otherwise they'll be in trouble. Well, they have to rely on that money for the hearing aid, for seeing a child in a medical practitioner, for seeing a dentist. For a pair of spectacles, so and so forth. Because there is inadequate public dental services. They cannot afford a private dentist, even examination will cost them five thousand dollars. And if they need to extract a tooth, all five thousand dollars may be spent in one visit. So another one thousand dollar is not going to resolve the problem. We need a clinic in each of the eighteen districts that serve the public. And I hope that it will not be restricted to the elderly only. The public or the government may say that for the elderly, they can use the um. Community Care Fund, but according to an audit report. The outrageous fact is, the administrative. Cost spent on the service is more than the dental services provided to the elderly. Although we have close to a hundred and forty billion dollars in surplus. This is not helping the elderly and the grassroots at all. The government should provide dental services to all those over sixty five years old. It is most. It is most important, but it is not just the elderly that have dental problem. Now, I'd like to talk about barrier-free dental services. Uh this is because in society we have a group of uh people, including those who are severely mentally handicapped. Uh those suffering from autism and uh those who are mentally impaired. And with multiple handicaps, these are children that. Now, because under the current system, uh there is the student oral hygiene services for those under eighteen years old. But that, but this service cannot help the groups I've just mentioned. Because of their physical conditions, many of them cannot uh cannot lie on the dental bed. To uh receive dental examination. Uh they will have to be taken by their parents to our, to government dental clinics, including uh the one at McLeoh's. Um hospital, uh dental clinic, but because the children are not willing to open their mouth. So they have to come again next time. So uh the dental condition of these children is very bad. And after they have turned eighteen, they have no access to public service at all. A few years ago, there was a scheme to help this group, this group of children. Unfortunately, the uh. Backlog has not been cleared yet, and the government has promised to give only a few tens of millions of dollars. And it is only one of, this is not recurrent provision. Is it because we don't have resources, we're incapable of affording it? The answer is no. We have just set up a new children hospital, and that is the best solution. Whether we are talking about uh in, handicapped children below six, eighteen, or those who, or those who are over eighteen. Physically, they may look like an adult, but their mental age may only be three or four years old. If you have been to the evangelical hospital and see for yourself, you will understand. That uh the pressure on their family members is great. They do not, they cannot use ordinary dental services. They need intravenous injection, and they may even need a general anesthesia before they can be served. Unfortunately, we haven't been given any positive response from the government. Uh that is, there is no guarantee that these services will be provided in the newly commissioned. Children Hospital. The Department of Health must discuss with the parents concerned. We have spent billions of dollars on the new children's hospital, and if we cannot address the needs of these children, this is unfortunate. Now, I'd like to turn to uh the problem of skin problems. Although our undertaking is that within twelve weeks, they will be attended to. But only thirty one percent of them uh can be treated in twelve weeks' time. And in twenty seventeen, it was only thirty three percent that could meet the target. This is a big uh problem for the low-income earners. Because, let me put it this way. They really cannot afford expensive private dermatologist. So, I hope that services can be boosted. So that, that for those who are, who have waited for more than a year before they. Uh can uh see, get the first time appointment, can be given some relief. I still have some time left. I'd like to talk about the R T H K. All through the years, the government has deliberately strive for R T H K. This is strange. The Finance Committee. Would usually, in the Finance Committee, usually the establishment camp would support all government. Proposals regardless, but on the question of R T H K, the situation was very awkward. All pro-establishment members voted down the proposal to build a new TV house, a new broadcasting house. So they are still waiting for the funding application to be submitted to the F C. They are working in their old broadcasting house. Uh this is twenty eighteen, the government has got a trillions of uh dollars of reserve. And uh this year we have more than a hundred and forty dollars of surplus. And yet, uh when it rains, they have to use a bucket to catch the water from the ceiling. They're using very outdated equipment, and many of them are still on contract. I can think of only one reason for this phenomenon. Many media organizations in Hong Kong already in the hands of uh mainland entrepreneurs. And we have only the R T H K, the only public broadcaster that can um. Uh allow members of the public to uh to express their views through the radio programs and otherwise. And I think the government is um has a. Has employed all means to um delay the funding for the, for R T H K. I hope that uh they will not uh add insult to um hurt. I think they should give the necessary resources to R T H K. Thank you.
Mister Alnokin. Well, if you're waiting to finish your work, then the debate will be meaningless. Why did I just say that? Because last night, I went to sleep at three. I have prepared questions concerning twelve departments. I have highlighted all those departments that are prepared for. My colleague has spent one day to prepare questions and our points. But I only have fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes to say my piece. Is it really fair? Why people who have, who are well-prepared are penalized? I thank the two secretaries who are still here to listen to our views, including uh Mister Lau and Mister Law. Mister Law may have mixed feelings. He was a legislator in the nineties. He might think that is what it's um today. Um budget debate like this. There are a lot of problems with the debate arrangements when it comes to the various heads with no amendment. For these thirty eight heads with no amendment, to strictly speaking, it means that they are heads. When members are unable to move amendments. The six legislators have been disqualified. Rules of procedures have been tightened. I have proposed over sixty amendments. Five involves the same department or the same head. Only one is approved by the president. All others have been rejected. There is no chance for me to have these debated. There are five amendments relating to the same department. But of different areas, say for example, Education Bureau. There is one about docking the pay of the secretary. There is one about docking the TSA funding. You only allow one, that, that is the one that dock the secretary's pay. But there are two different proposals. How can you give us a fair chance to say our piece? These heads may not have any amendments, but it doesn't mean that these heads or departments. Don't have any room for improvement. I have prepared over ten questions. Thirty eight heads, only seven hours for debate. Actually, it's less than that, because as Mister Ray Chen said that we have to be very general. If we divide um it by the thirty eight heads and sixty seven members. Then each member can spend nine point nine eight seconds on each head. Well, I think it's what a boat can do for a hundred meter race using boat. If you accept this arrangement where we don't have sufficient time for a debate, this is a huge insult. To the legal, and it is also a tragedy to our constitutional development. I don't have much time, and I will use however much time I have to talk about the heads. I don't know how many departments I can cover. I'll do my best. First, Head One One Two, the Electoral Commission. I want to say that, well, for various security reasons, um they have been tightening freedom of assembly and freedom. It shows that they, they don't want to hear about any adverse sentiment from the public. Miss Tan Yucheng asked questions, and we found that a million dollars has been sent or, sorry, has been spent on the security staff. I asked questions about a number of security staff, but they tried to home and home and avoid my question. And the written answer they have given us is ridiculous. They said that security staff is responsible for entry and exit. However, three thousand four hundred hours have been spent on a security check at entrances. What was it about? How come that it has so much time is spent on it? Is it because they, these people are employed to inform themselves into a war to stop protesters? Well, so far, there is no amendment under Head One One Two. Well, shouldn't it be renamed into a security um unit? There has been a lot of money accumulated. It should not be used to tighten our freedom of expression. Two, I want to talk about the Head One Six Nine, the interception of communications and surveillance. There has been an increase of twenty four point six percent, twenty three persons. While there was an amendment in twenty sixteen, the commissioner was empowered to require law enforcement agencies. To submit further information. It seems to be a progress. But with technological advancement, the ordinance is seriously obsolete because it doesn't cover electronic communications. Well, in twenty fourteen, there was about a one thousand, one thousand six hundred. And two years later, it's a drop to one thousand four hundred or so. Does it mean that they have other channels to collect information from the public? Well, the ordinance itself is to ensure Article Seventeen of I C C P R. That means, well, privacy should not be infringed. Law enforcement agencies will have to make applications, will have to be subject to monitoring. The ordinance also put in place safeguards and measures. Say, for example, where when it comes to um legal, uh professional privilege and also journalistic material, they should be first make an application. And it was also ordered that warrant has to be obtained first before the police can seize information. That was dislocate, uh when it comes to this lawsuit, the Department of Justice applied for an appeal. Mister Lee, the undersecretary, said last year in the financial sec- financial meeting that um. Well, um when hackers use software, we, we have reasonable to believe that hacking. Software have been used to tap into our communication. And inf- and information service providers have been requested to supply information. Over seven thousand times uh have been recorded when it comes to information, when it comes to internet service providers. That was a case. Bukhari said that when it comes to the commissioner. Well, when there is irregularities. There will be repercussions. Those who are innocent will be covered as well. The ordinance aim to protect public security. There should be, well, this is the stance of the judge. The control should be put in place to make sure that freedom of citizens should be protected. Article Thirty of the Basic Law is there to ensure that such freedom, such freedom is protected. The third department is Head One Two One, that is I P C C. Recently, well, that is a heated topic. The I P C C did not do its um best. Uh members who have been appointed because of their political stance in twenty sixteen, a number of members sided with the government have been appointed. The I P C C already has no power to penalize. Different views have been suppressed. The I P C C is a call for those who oppose to umbrella movement, as well as those who support C Y Leng. Democratic, Democrats, our former legislators have not been appointed. I P C C is two-flets. Say, for example, the CNN inspector, frankly, Ju. Well, it has taken a long time for the case to be substantiated. First time, it was unsubstantiated. The second time, it was substantiated. But the, but the accusation was changed. The I P C C refused to accept that. The third time, it was assault, but there is lack of evidence. Indian um secret, secret voting will have to be used to revert the case back to capo. And in the end, capo agreed that assault allegation is substantiated. So a lot of public money has been used. A member Chang said that they have received telephone calls of lobbying. He can't tell who called him for the lobbying. Capo officers were not cooperating with the Ju case. They have mixed Ju's case with the Occupy, the Occupy movement. With obvious evidence, the capo will have to do it four times before they substantiated the case. I do believe that a lot of cases have been buried. A lot of questions have been asked. It's taken three years, over eight hundred days. Uh for Avery Yu, um well, he was attacked first of July. It's taken a year for investigation to complete, and we still don't know about the findings. According to annual reports of I P C C. Well, since two thousand nine, when it was set up, about ten percent of the cases involving police officers were substantiated. If it involves allegations of assault, every year is about two cases substantiated. Well, there is, it is suspected that capo has not done his best to collect information. This year, the I P C C asked for reclassification of cases, several unsubstantiated ones. Uh after the re-categorization, the number of substantial cases has greatly increased. This is a poor system. It's not convenient for people to make complaint. There are hundred and nine, uh nine hundred questions, five hundred of them have been accepted. Only fifty seven percent have been, have been accepted. You can see that. It is very ineffective when it comes to monitoring the work of the police. There are serious staff shortage. There were fifty people in the twenty fifteen, sixteen, um responsible for cases. Well, we have about twenty eight thousand police officers. So there is a low staff ratio of I P C C, so more resources should be given. Has it been given? A former chairman of I P C C said that Canadian model can, should be taken into account. A former chairman of IPCC said that uh Canadian model can uh should be taken into account. The E O C model should be considered as well. So far, there is no reform. We have not drawn reference um of the U K counterpart. It because there is independent power. I wa- I was a former uh conven- convener. And in twenty seventeen March, we have made complaints against police officers. Half a year went by. We have not received any information about progress. The capo replied to us, I P S S did not, but we gave him our document personally. Back in those days of the former chairman, Chuck, police would have meetings with our uh association. But when it comes to chair incumbent chairman Quoc, it hasn't done any, he hasn't done anything like that, so it is regressive. I've just completed IPCC. I asked the government to review the current IPCC system and change it into an independent body. But in this budget, although there are no amendments, we don't have any chance to speak on IPCC. I've only covered three departments. I still have nine more. Why are we penalized? Because we have made preparations. I always see Mister Law as my enemy because back in nineteen nineties, he decided the the path of Democratic Party. I was at one point responsible for policy in the party. I've always wanted to be shown that um well, there needs to be policy and I can't do anything this time. I find it regrettable.
Yes, Claudia Moore. Uh Ngalokin, you are good. I know um Mister Chen Chichin has a friend called us with a nickname called Slow Bit. And I feel now we have a f- a fast bit, Mister Fast Bit here. Well, I'm not good at speaking so fast and I'm I I do not attempt to do it. So, how many members spoke for more than once in this session last year? But now you have drawn light to prevent anyone after me to speak. But so you drew drew the line with so much determination. Nothing I can do about this. The government talks about new philosophy in fiscal management. Well, that's just talk. I want to talk about Head seventy four. Uh Government Information Service and also another head on R T H K. Well, what kind of news uh philosophy is this? It's just about allocating money in accordance with past practice. And sometimes you see uh ritual aggressive steps taken. We need to go to the very beginning. R T H K will be given a budget of one billion dollars this coming year. It's it was just make do, not much. And the G I S Information Services Department will help get half of that, five hundred million dollars. You may say that they are uh the mouthpieces of government, what is bigger than the others. They should be given funding of of this scale. No. R T H K is a public broadcaster. And the definition of a public broadcaster is that it should be beyond political manipulation. And uh of course, now it's beyond commercial manip- manipulation because it doesn't offer advertisement service. Where in my time, in the earlier days, Information Services Department was highly regarded. We have uh Mister uh Irene Yao, Miss Irene Yao and uh Miss Zhou Man Yi as directors. Uh back then, there was no email, no internet. And the G I S provided news and information to journalists, very important information. And now, the department is given five hundred million dollars a year. The reason the directors include Mister Ever Yao, this current secretary for Commerce and Economic Development, Mister Wong Wei Lung, the previous director, is now the uh secretary for Development. And also Mister Nie Duk Kuen is now the secretary for Constitutional and Mainland Affairs. So if you did do a good job in the Information Services Department, you get promoted. So we know what's happened in the past. But we would uh work in close uh collaboration with information offices. We will work uh on the basis of information from the uh information G I S. And now the department is just like a propaganda department of the C P G. Oh, we uh did some protests when we visited the uh West Kowloon Station. We protested. So the photos issued by the uh G I S uh had to show some members holding up a placard in protest. But if you want to enlarge the picture to see what's the message on the or the slogan, you will see nothing. And in the text, there's not even one word telling people that there are legislators com- complaining about the inability to see the whole boundary for the mainland pole area. And also how the passage ways uh arrange compared with the G I S in the eighties or the nineties. This is a very different department. And then uh for Head seventy four, oh what are they going to do with the five hundred million dollars? Half will be on the salary and remuneration of staff and then and then talk about their, they talk about the role. There are a number of programs, well, alarm, five of them. Number one, public relations outside Hong Kong, P R, that is. It's outside for P R outside Hong Kong. In the past, we we'd uh helped overseas journalists. But now we're very careful because they are from other countries, they're external forces. But it's outside Hong Kong. It means the mainland is program one. Second, program number two, local public relations, local P R. And public information. What do you mean by public information? Uh I have given you an example uh how they uh dealt with the visit to the X R L station. And it said that the uh internal service of the government uh is something that they have to report to Secretary for Home Affairs. That is to say, Mister Lau Guang Wah. Well, I do expect something uh to change over time, but uh not this kind of uh change that is now totally beyond recognition. And when it comes to the for the targets, is to promote good im- our good image in the mainland. Well, this is uh just like a propaganda department. I cannot imagine what is actually done. And also, both locally and outside Hong Kong, they will make use of uh new media, Facebook, YouTube, Instagram, Twitter, all of it, all of these. I cannot say I'm not active. I'm not an active internet user. But I I would say that I barely noticed these because you are hot cell, you're doing hot cell. So the half of the um provision go to salary and remuneration and the other half go to such activities. Of course, you will be concerned about how we are assessed by overseas media, how they see us. And if necessary, uh response will be provided to overseas um me- reporting of Hong Kong. As an old guy who are looking at such new areas, I'm so alarmed. So, it seems that the uh Information Services Department provides a letter for promotion to some people. In the past, uh we had journalists who are out of jobs for some time and who who would t- t- tell people that I would work for the out uh for the I S D for a while. That's would not cause you to lose any face. And when you talk about promotion of Hong Kong's image or local public relations, this is a curious way of putting it. The I S D has a lot of hardware to do this, but the software is not there. The reverse is true for R T H K. They have the software, but not the hardware. As you, Mister Chen Chichin has said, the three buildings there uh would see dripping water when there's rain. They have buckets here and there to co- collect the money. There's water sipping everywhere. It's a third world country scenario. We have a reserve of one trillion dollars and yet the R T H K is treated like this. Don't you find this uh surprising? After nineteen ninety seven, R T H K should have been high off. And then it was because of Mrs. An Sun Chan as chief secretary, the who refused to budge. And um Mister C H Tong said the the will would fire away uh to deal with R T H K. But uh before he succeeded, he had to leave. And then Mister Donald Zhang talk about uh do starting with a clean slate. Uh he would like to X R T H K and start again afresh so that we can have a sen- a branch of this central people's uh radio station in Hong Kong. Uh but the the community gave support to R T H K. That now, R T H K has seen all these uh ups and downs and still in a good shape. But is it a genuine public broadcaster? I have my doubts. I'm not trying to uh de mi- belittle the uh people working in R T H K, but I'm talking about the objective fact. R T H K is a government department. Of course, the government department has to obey the orders of the government. But you are saying that we have this charter on the public broadcasting. You you have editorial independence. We are an organization with editorial independence, but you are suffering from schizophrenia. That's why the community group in support of R T H K would have to change a slogan that we are in support of a public broadcaster. But uh for you have, people have to forget about this uh as aspiration. It would not allow any book public, real public broadcaster to be established. Maybe uh we have to wait until twenty forty seven. You know that the R T H K uh issued this uh sent sentence in one of the internet platforms that the Emperor C will last forever. What's the problem with this? What's the problem with this remark? You know that the media all all the world, which are monitored by I S D, and R T H K said this is not allowed. According to ins- insider's information, the C E D B to warn them, the remarks should be deleted. It was considered inappropriate. So that's political interference. That's political pressure. C E D B uh refused to answer my question whether it did that. R T H K uh only said that they decided to delete that remark. It did not uh deny that it was due to the uh pressure from C E D B. So it uh sometimes people tell the truth, but not necessarily the hope, but not the whole truth. Uh God bless R T H K. Uh Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development, would you like to speak?
Chairman, I thank members for their views. Then, it is important that uh these are sums are for thirty eight heads stand part of the bill. This is most important because uh without the money, um the uh departments and bureaus will not have the necessary sources to provide the necessary service to the public. In order that uh the um um uh the uh financial suggestions uh can be implemented A S A P, I urge members to uh allow the um clauses to stand part of the bill. And I put a question you that assumes for the heads right up by the clock stand part of the schedule. Would those in favor please raise their hands. Mister Ray Chen claims a division. The division bill will run for five minutes. Voting begins. Please check your votes. If there are no questions, then voting is closed. I display the results, fifty-five percent forty-three for eleven against. The question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed.